I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council Study Session held on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, commencing at 7:00 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Nueva Camina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Salahudin, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Fields, and myself, President Kritzer. There are four items on our agenda tonight. The Solar Plus Energy Storage Feasibility Study Overview, the Transportation Master Plan Status Update, Automated Speed Safety Cameras, Amendment City Ordinance and Camera Vendor Service Agreement, and Council Talk Time. The first item on our agenda is the Solar Plus Energy Storage Feasibility Study Overview. Jenny Liebeck, our Sustainability Manager, will introduce this item. Go ahead, Ms. Liebeck.
Good evening, Council. So again, I'm Jenny Liebeck, Sustainability Manager, and with me tonight is Mark Frankel from the consulting firm Ecotope. And tonight, we are excited to review the findings from the Solar Plus Battery Storage Assessment that we completed at the end of last year. But just a bit of background, so we received a grant from the Washington Department of Commerce to complete this feasibility study, and we were funded to do more higher-level analysis of four city facilities that are really, we use, or that are critical during emergencies. And so tonight, we're hoping to leave you with a baseline understanding of why solar and energy storage is a powerful tool for our climate and emergency preparedness work. We'll share some of the more promising applications within city operations that the analysis identified, and then we'll discuss some recommendations and the ways that we can best prepare to use this technology in our facilities in the future. So just to start us off, I will say that this was our first foray into kind of the solar storage space. And so first and foremost, one of our primary goals was really to come into this with a posture of learning and to just develop a better understanding of what it means to leverage solar and battery storage into some of our facilities. So second, we also really wanted to come out with some, clearly identify city facilities and use cases that were really well-aligned with solar and storage. And then finally, we really wanted to, you know, proactively position ourselves for future grant opportunities. And so this was, again, kind of the key pieces that guided us into the work in partnership with Ecotope. I do want to note, too, that this was not necessarily, while the report is thorough and it does seem like it was a deep dive, there's still a lot more analysis that needs to be done. So within the report, you're not going to find specific design or cost estimates, right? Because again, we're just trying to understand where our priorities are, what are kind of, again, some of the good sites that we may want to do that deeper dive where we can start to do the more detailed cost analysis and get into specific design. So again, the full analysis was attached to your council materials, but we were fortunate to have Mark here tonight to break this down into really bite-sized pieces and then hopefully make you all into solar and energy storage professionals. So I'm going to hand it over to Mark to go through some of those details.
Thanks, Jenny, and thanks for having me to talk about this. I want to first give you a sort of a brief overview of the way we're thinking about this. And in the context of the four buildings we looked at, we looked at the roof area available on the building as the limits of the solar installation, so not off-site or remote, with the exception of the public safety building, which we also used the adjacent garage to define the area. And so the area defined by the roof of each building defines how much power we can generate. So if you look at this graph, this is showing a daily energy use pattern, and the yellow is the solar generation in the middle of the day with noon being the high point, and it's a 24-hour graph. So as you can imagine, when the sun goes down, the building has to run on power that's either collected or from the grid or whatever. So the blue lines at the bottom are the building load, and there's two of them. One is maybe a high and one is maybe partial load of the building, emergency operation only, or a more efficient building or what have you. And the area under the curve in the yellow has to be as much as the blue edges for the night. So in the daytime, you gather enough solar energy and you store it that you can run the building through the night and through the morning until the sun comes up again. So you'll notice there's two different yellow shades in this graph. That represents summer and winter generation for any given facility because there's a lot less sun in the winter, so it's a smaller amount of energy you have to work with. And so that defines whether or not you have a year-round resiliency solution. If there's enough area of winter sun that exceeds the 24-hour building load, then the building can just keep running continuously on solar and storage. So that's the basic scenario that we're looking at, and we're looking at the resiliency against power failures or power outages that might come with heat events or cold events or public safety power shut-off when the utilities are turning off generation because they're worried about wildfires, as we see in California, and the local utilities are talking about how that would happen in Washington now as well. So there are conceivable situations where you might see grid outages that you need to operate your buildings through. So to get a little more specific about the way we evaluated this, next slide, please. The resiliency scenarios we looked at are full operation of the building at current load, that is with the solar and battery system installed that matches the building size. Would you be able to run the building as it's currently operating just as if nothing happened? Then what if the buildings were improved? And if you recall from our discussion of the facility condition assessment, both this building and the public safety building are going to be subject to some improved performance requirements under the Clean Building Performance Standard in the state. So we sort of looked at after that, does that make it, get us closer to being able to run these buildings on the solar that's available? And we looked at emergency operation of a subset of loads. So in the case of this building, it was just a sort of a definition of the emergency operations center that has to run no matter what. In public safety building, we assumed that the whole building had to run, so that was, there was not a subset of operation. And Fire Station 17 also, we assumed, had to run fully, not a subset of the building. And then finally, the Redmond Senior and Community Center, most of the building would run in the scenarios we looked at. We also looked at whether it was a case of seasonal resiliency where through some months of the year, you could count on full operation even if the power went out, but in the winter, maybe not so much because there's less solar. So in our region, the grid issues are more likely, especially a public power safety shut-off is more likely in fire season, so that's a summer issue. So there's some reason to think about seasonal resiliency as a concept. And then also, having a system like this might give you days or hours of resiliency that might be useful in a shorter emergency or to give you time to mobilize resources such as generators or other systems or move emergency operations to a facility that's not effective or what have you. We also talked briefly about electric vehicle integration, both as a way to use some of the solar as well as a way to provide emergency backup for the buildings, and I'll talk briefly about generator integration as well. On a daily basis, there's also benefits to having a solar plus storage system. You can have, you can reduce the peak loads of your building using the batteries instead. As the utilities in our region move to demand charges, which is coming, you'll be incentivized to have, reduce the building peaks, and the battery system can do that. You also have utility cost reduction because you're harvesting energy from the sun, and you have carbon impact reduction because our electricity grid still has carbon in it. So to the extent you're using electricity generated onsite, you're using clean electricity, and again, vehicle charging, that can be a daily event. So as Jenny mentioned, the four facilities that we evaluated were City Hall and in particular the Emergency Operations Center here, the Public Safety Building, the Redmond Senior Community Center, and Fire Station 17, which is also the backup Emergency Operations Center. And as I mentioned, the building operating scenarios were, can we run the building as it is at full operation? Can we run a better building if the building performance were improved? Or, you know, better or way better, what I call best-in-class operation, which I'll talk about briefly, and then an emergency operations scenario. And I want to mention that for emergency operations scenarios, we sort of made our best estimate of what that might look like for your facilities. It wasn't completely clear what emergency operation would look like for this building, so we chose a portion of, I think it was at the fourth floor that the Emergency Operations Center is on, and associated, you know, restrooms and some additional facilities. But that was just sort of our judgment of what might make a reasonable piece of this building that you would want to run continuously as an emergency center. As I mentioned, the Public Safety Building, we just assumed would run full out, and Fire Station 17 also would need to run full out in emergency. And then for the Redmond Community Center, we talked about running about 80% of the building as emergency operations, you know, for a community resource, and we'll talk about that in a moment. Maybe that moment is here. Yes. Do you want to introduce that?
Yeah. So I will. You were wrapping up this analysis right when the bomb cyclone happened, and so it honestly ended up becoming a really great trial run and demonstration for, you know, how the Redmond Senior Community Center would be used in an emergency. So obviously, we were fortunate that we didn't lose power there, but we know, we found, right, that this would, became a hub for the community, right? Folks came there to warm up, just to hang out, take a shower, and so, just as they waited for their power to get restored, and so it became this natural place. And so again, it just really illustrated the power and opportunity with solar and energy storage. Again, really fortunate that the power didn't go out there, but we knew that then this could be a really great use case, and Mark can talk about some of the findings from that, too.
So as I mentioned, we made some assumptions about what an emergency use case of that building would be, and we assumed that you would run the kitchen and maybe the gymnasium as an emergency sleeping area and some of the main floor facilities for community members and them to come and work and charge their laptops or stay warm or stay cool or what have you. And we sort of offset, we figured things like the gymnasium maybe and some of the upstairs offices wouldn't be run. We didn't do a detailed analysis of what exactly was and wasn't in, but we assumed about an 80% occupancy during an emergency. And what we found was that about seven or eight months out of the year, if you had a solar plus storage system just on the roof of that building with associated batteries, the building would be fully self-sufficient for, you know, from about March through October under any circumstance. And then in the other parts of the season, you would need some additional power, which might be a portable generator or a smaller subset of the building that you operate daily or what have you. So that's a pretty big chunk of resiliency that is offered by that building, and it's a very efficient building, which makes it easier to run that way. And so if we go, let's see, did I cover enough there? I think so. So if we go to the next slide, this sort of shows the, what I call seasonal resiliency, which means that if you put solar on the roof, on the available roof area of each of these buildings with an appropriate-sized battery, you would get full resiliency during this portion of the year. So for City Hall, using a subset of the fourth floor with the roof that we have, and there's already some solar up there, you basically have the ability to run the Emergency Operations Center from February through October without any additional work or generators or anything. The Redmond Community Center, running most of the building is March through October, or September, excuse me. The Public Safety Building is a very big load, but it's got that whole big parking garage next to it. So if you cover all that, that's a very large solar array, and you would get full operation for about six months out of the year through the summer where the power could go out and the building would just continue to run on a daily basis as it recharges every day. Note that that is a more efficient building than the current building, but a building that's compliant with the Clean Building Performance Standard requirements, which is, I believe you guys are working on that right now. And then Fire Station 17 was not a good candidate. It's not, the roof is somewhat shaded by large trees, and it's not that big a roof, and it's not that efficient a building, honestly. So what we looked at is what if it were a really good, high-performance fire station? Your neighboring community of Issaquah has a very efficient fire station that uses about a third as much energy per square foot as Fire Station 17, full functional fire station. So if you were to build new facilities that met that level of performance, you might have some options to run it seasonally on solar plus storage. So, whoops. So in addition to looking at just, you know, can we run the building or subset of the building on solar plus storage, we looked at what other integration advantages there might be to a system like this. So I mentioned that these buildings have seasonal resilience, which means in the summer, they can be fully self-sufficient off the grid, but it doesn't take that much to bring them to year-round resiliency because the solar works all year even if it doesn't generate enough. So then a small generator backup would probably carry you through the rest of the year, and I put a picture here of a small 50 KW generator, which is enough to provide all, 100% resiliency for the senior center. So it's a small addition, I think that's like a $40,000 generator or something, that would get you the rest of the way to have year-round capabilities. Of course, if you had a portable generator, you could use it in other facilities for the same reason, if they, if they had differential issues. For perspective, I put a Ford Lightning on there that has a battery capacity of about three times, three hours' worth of that generator. So if you have electric fleet vehicles, they become a resource that can support building emergency operation. You know, again, you're just trying to sort of bridge the gap through the night, so having some electric vehicles onsite might be a way to do that in the off-season when you're not getting enough out of the solar. And also, every one of these evaluations has surplus solar in the daytime even after the battery is charged, that you're maybe trying to sell back the utility, and that's a good, you know, charging your own vehicles is a good use of that power. It's a lot cheaper than buying it from the utility. And I know you guys have also, I believe you have an electric fire truck, at least one, with perhaps more envisioned, and those make great integrations with the solar storage system. If the grid goes down, you really want to be able to charge those trucks even if you can't run the full building on it or whatever. So having the ability to, to support your electric vehicles off-grid makes them a much more important resource. And then finally, I want to, well, not finally, but I want to mention also that having batteries makes a really good integration with generators, emergency generators. Emergency generators have to be sized for the biggest load they could see. So say, you know, let's just make up a number, 100 KW generator for a building load that's usually running about 20 KW but has spikes to 100 for 10 minutes, and usually the spikes for building load last less than 10% of their total operation. But the generator has to be sized to meet that or the system will crash. But generators operate very inefficiently at low load, so if you put in a big generator and then run it at a really low load, you reduce its lifespan, you reduce its dependability, and you reduce its efficiency. So incorporating a battery system that the battery meets the spikes, and then having a much smaller generator that's job is just to run the building mostly and recharge the battery could be a much more efficient way to think about emergency power for your emergency So, did I cover everything? I think we already talked about emissions and utility cost reductions that are associated with solar storage systems. So that's just a daily advantage of these. So when you start putting these things together, you can start to see that there might be cases when you want to deploy this, and that was the goal of the study, was to see how much sense it made for some of your facilities.
So, so again, we looked at these four facilities, but I think what was interesting for me was that a lot of the outcomes were not necessarily like we will install, you know, solar storage on this facility, but giving us a much broader look and how we kind of think comprehensively about both preparing ourselves for solar storage work but also thinking about resiliency as well. And so some of the key, key findings from this, from this analysis are, you know, first and foremost, making updates to our facility emergency operations plans. So again, as, you know, Mark noted, we have a lot of, a really efficient network of fossil fuel generators that keep our facilities going during emergencies, but for us to really effectively integrate solar and batteries, we need to be clearly identifying those emergency loads that we need to be serving, right? So that we can properly size those systems and make sure that we're, again, yeah, just properly sizing our PV and battery systems. And so that is, you know, our number one priority is starting to map out those, those critical loads. So the second piece, too, is that we want to make sure that as we're building new buildings like the MOC, that we're creating space to install solar and battery storage systems in the future. And Mark, do you want to speak to any of these pieces?
Yeah, I just, in, one of the things we found in the existing buildings was it was very difficult to understand what emergency operation looked like, what, how the building was designed to run at part-load, what loads the generators were serving, and whether they were sized appropriately. And going back and sort of retrofitting for this is a lot harder than thinking at the front of like, we're going to, we're going to integrate a solar storage system in this building to reduce our generator size, to give us some resiliency, to provide vehicle charging, and all the things that you would think about upfront are much easier to do in a new building than in an existing building. So it's much more cost-effective.
So I think, too, it's, in addition to it being cost-effective, it also really positions us well for grants in the future, too. So if we have something that's ready to go, again, it just makes us, I think, a much more compelling site and more cost-effective site for grants. And so, you know, as, the big findings, again, from actually the facility's perspective is that we see a lot of opportunity at the Redmond Senior Community Center for us to explore solar storage and then also potentially at City Hall as well. So again, some constraints that we need to look at with both sites, but, you know, opportunities there that we are, we plan to look more into. And then, you know, one piece, too, so this, this work was all discussed and presented internally as well, as we, again, worked to build that, kind of our general knowledge of solar and storage applications. And one of the topics that was raised was, you know, is there an opportunity to use solar storage for our pumps, specifically for our water and wastewater pumps, or our traffic signals, right? Because that's when, you know, those generators are moving, our staff are going out and checking those during those emergency events. So exploring whether there are opportunities there as well. I mean, it's a little bit more of a nascent technology, so there aren't a lot of great use cases for us to look at, but certainly something that, again, we can, we will be doing more exploring. So, so we do, we have some budget in this budget cycle to do, to take some of these next steps, and again, really try and position us for, for grants or, you know, support the MOC work where we can. And so that's really the phase that we're in now is trying to, you know, one, again, educate ourselves and apply this information and figure out where best to leverage those funds so we can be bringing one of these systems to the city in the future. So I think that's, we can leave it there.
Yeah, we, we went through that pretty fast, and we have some additional information. If you guys have questions, we can bring up more slides or answer the questions or what have you.
Thank you so much. This is really exciting work, and I'll go to councilmembers for questions. Councilmember Fields.
So it seems like the Rubik's Cube that you're trying to solve is, what are, what are the optimal sources or which facilities will create, you know, the optimal amount of energy? And then the other side of that is how to use it and where's the best place to use it or where the needs are. When you were talking about generators, occurred to me that there, that there's some, at least that I can imagine, some limited opportunity for transportability, like moving energy from one place to another, or maybe even since these two buildings are close, moving energy from one building to another. Did you look at that, or is that something that you plan on looking at?
We briefly talked about this campus situation as a way to share, and there was a lot of resistance to connecting the buildings through the, through the courtyard. I don't exactly know for sure why. So we did not actually explore whether or not a single battery bank could serve multiple buildings or what have you. We were discouraged from that, but it seems like it might make sense. And then to your other point, we did have to define the goals of the study. There's many, many different ways you could look at this and decide what your goals are, and we tried to sort of put some boundaries around it so that we could define some criteria that we were trying to meet, and there's other ways to think about it.
Yeah, I'll just chime in really quick. When we first started this process, that was my vision, was like, oh, let's look for a microgrid for the City Hall campus. It's perfect. And quickly, you know, one, just the load and the space, right? That was quickly not feasible. But the other piece, too, is that we sit in a flood plain area here, this area can flood, right? And so there becomes concerns there as well, and that, yeah, from a resilience perspective, again, having, having areas that flood, it makes it a little bit more tricky to accommodate. So that being one of the other factors, too, that was part of the conversation.
It's easy to move electric vehicles around, though.
Yes.
Well, just a quick follow-up. I, I get what you're saying. It feels like it should at least be looked at because technology is always out there in my view of the world, and we think we know everything, but we don't know everything. So the potential for an emergency hookup, if it's not a flood, is possible. I'm, that's just, I wouldn't give up on it. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. The public safety building with the parking garage, that's a big area, that's a lot of solar capacity, so if that were the thing that could serve other parts of the campus, maybe that'd be a way to think about it.
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you, and that was a perfect lead-in because my question pertains to the parking structure. So if we were to, per this study, we would be taking away the parking on the first level or would we be doing a canopy of solar?
Canopy over the top, no parking lost except, you know, maybe.
Perfect. That was the answer I was hoping for. Also on that, the, the storage facilities up there, they're, we are right next to an apartment building. What's the noise impact of the storage, battery storage?
I do not know the answer to that question. There are ways to isolate it, but I, I don't, I don't have enough familiarity with the boundaries of the campus and to give you a recommendation of how to deal with it, but you'd have to deal with it.
Is there, for the load we're talking about, is there an average decibel that you know of that, that those emit, or is that something that we?
That is knowable. I do not know it.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions from the council? Councilmember Stewart?
Well, thank you both so much for being here and for your work on this. I'm really glad that the city had an opportunity to kind of investigate these under the auspices of this resiliency project. My mind is already on to our next major capital project, and so I think I brought this up during our last committee meeting, but I'm curious, Jenny, if there are any of the recommendations for the integration for new buildings, those are included in the report. Are there any that are in this report that we know are particularly challenging or maybe at risk of being off the table for MOC development?
We've been working hand-in-hand with the cap, with Eric and Banji and the team, so nothing is off the table by any means. And again, we're thinking about how we can, kind of, again, create that space. So if we don't have the budget or the capacity to, to install the, the systems now, how do we make it ready for that? And so, yeah, all those conversations are on the table, and we're actively trying to, again, make that, make that work.
Awesome, yeah. Sorry, and I, I did misspeak, but I wanted to just make sure that these principles around designing for all-electric, designing for best-in-class, designing for two-way vehicle grid charging capacities, these are all things that we know exist and can, and help us achieve our goals later on. I think even having the, the brand-new Senior and Community Center evaluated as part of this, I mean, that was knowable, it was some tough choices we had to be made, but I look forward to using the data that we were able, and what we were able to learn through this grant process and the evaluation of the team in order to apply it to the next project. So no further questions, really, but thank you so much, and I look forward to integrating all that we've learned. Thank you.
Thank you. So following up on, on the mention around budget, should, do you think in terms of timeline, we would expect to be seeing for the next biennial budget, some proposals potentially for enhancements related to this work?
That's a very good question, and certainly something that, again, there's, you know, further analysis we need to do, and honestly, I'll need to talk with our CIP team about when that, because the CIP budget process is obviously a different timeline, so there are a few pieces there, so I'll have to get back to you on it as to whether we can get it in the next one.
Okay, great. Well, I guess I'll just say for my part, I really appreciate having this, this done. I think it's, it's very forward-looking, it's deeply aligned with the commitments that we've made through our ESAP and our Climate Emergency Declaration, and where we can take, you know, the learnings and the ideas that are within this report and start to move towards the implementation sooner than later, that's going to be great, especially as you mentioned about the example of, you know, some of the emergencies we'll see, the sooner we kind of have that additional resiliency and capacity, it'll be exciting, in addition to showcasing for, you know, our neighboring cities what's possible. Any other comments or questions on this item? All right, not seeing any. Just say thank you so much for this great work. This is really exciting, as I just said, and as I think my colleagues said, so really looking forward to seeing the follow-up on this, and we'll move on to our next item. Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
The next item on the agenda is the Transportation Master Plan Status Update, and I'll let our planning team come up and take their seats, and then I'll do a little introduction. Sitting down with us at this moment is our Director of Planning and Community Development, Karen. Carol Holland, who will introduce this item.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Council President Kritzer and council members. It's good to see you. This study session will provide an opportunity for us to continue our discussions on the Transportation Master Plan with a focus on the bike and freight strategies. Staff will provide an update on the TMP progress and timeline for remaining milestones, as well as a summary of the highlights from the bike system and freight chapters. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. I just, just as a reminder, we did last speak about the Bicycle Network chapter in November of last year. And both the Refined Bicycle Network chapter and the Freight chapter were sent to you late last month, earlier, earlier this month, late last month. And hopefully you had an opportunity to check, look those over. And tonight, we're going to be focusing specifically on the strategies and asking for additional review and feedback that you may have. So tonight, presenting this evening, we are joined by Michael Hints, our Transportation Planning Manager and Senior Transportation Planner, Francesca Liberty. And Seraphie Allen and I are both here to support them and the conversation, and I will hand that over to Michael and Francesca.
Thank you, and we're pleased to be here with this TMP update. I'm going to let Francesca walk through the schedule and give you an update on the schedule. And then we will open it up to questions. We do have a short presentation, just kind of recapping the, both those chapters, if it's useful to run through some slides. I'm seeing nods, yes, okay. We'll definitely plan on doing that. And then, yeah, just talk about upcoming milestones on the TMP.
All right. There we go. So as you can see from our updated timeline here, this slide should look familiar. We've presented it at prior study sessions here. We've pushed out our TMP adoption timeline to allow for more time for a dedicated review of each chapter, especially at the leadership level. The anticipated adoption of the TMP is now expected in Q2 of 2026. We're thinking April or May timeframe, so that's moved out from December of 2025. So we just, we realized it would be beneficial to allow for more time for cross-departmental collaboration and engaging those harder-to-reach populations, especially for our community engagement pieces of the TMP. And then with this slide, we have a timeline for bringing the chapters of the TMP here to council for study sessions for review. Tonight, we're focused on the Bicycle and Freight chapters. We'll be back in May to discuss the Transit Network and Street Network chapters. So we anticipate the full draft of the TMP. As you can see here, we'll be ready for public review and comment period in Q1 of next year, 2026. Any questions on that so far? Otherwise, we'll move into the Bicycle strategy, and I'll hand it back to Michael.
Excellent. Thank you, Francesca. So the Bicycle strategy is really framed around these, these outcome, outcome goals. These being having a bicycle and micro mobility, those are scooters and other battery-powered devices, mode share of 15% of all trips within our urban centers, and 5% citywide by 2035. It's really to help us meet our greenhouse gas reduction and VMT reduction goals and align with the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. So really, the key to doing this is connecting all key destinations with low-stress bicycle facilities. And that is really the, the main point of the Bicycle strategy. Next slide. So the network principles that the strategy is framed around is connected network, allowing people to get from everywhere to everywhere by bicycle. Direct, trying to make those connections as direct as possible between where people want to go and their homes. Cohesive really means it's intuitive, it's easy to understand. People just, it just comes naturally, how to use the network. And safe and comfortable really relates to the, how people feel using it. You know, we've heard a lot of feedback that the straight bike lanes that are predominant in Redmond today and in a lot of other cities just don't provide that level of comfort that a lot of people are willing to, to, that allows people to use the facilities. And then multimodal, we have great transit coming online here and already online in Redmond, and we want people to be able to leverage that system, connect to it via bicycle, and also people arriving in Redmond by light rail to be able to hop on a bike and get to where they need to go. Next slide. This is our, the Draft Bike Network that is in the chapter that you received. And the, the network's really broken down into two main components. We have the Spine Network. This is kind of a continuation of a concept from the 2013 TMP, which is kind of like the, the main bicycle arterials in the city that really connect neighborhoods to our urban centers. Then we have the Neighborhood Network, which are the mostly bicycle boulevards and low-volume, low-speed streets that connect people to our Bicycle Spine Network. Next slide. We did, we prioritize this network using these criteria: safety, equity, proximity to key destinations, comfort, that is sort of the existing level of comfort, route connectivity, topography. We factored that in as well. And the Spine Network is really, we gave the Spine Network extra points. So it really comes out on top because it is really key, and that is where we want to put our focus. As I mentioned earlier, it's really that network that's going to connect people to, from their, from their neighborhoods to the major destinations that they want to get to. And then we also looked, we used some big data, replica data, to do a short-trip density analysis. We really want to understand where those short trips that are currently being made by, by motor vehicle are happening. And so we looked at trips that are three miles or less, understanding that those, those are the prime trips that we could shift to, to bicycle. Okay, so these are the key, key strategies. And I'll touch on these kind of briefly. But these are really what the, the chapter is organized around and where we want to put our focus. So like I said, converting those short trips, the image on the screen is, is an outcome of that short-trip analysis that we did. So not too surprising, you're seeing a lot of heavy density of short trips happening to and from our urban centers. Those red, dark red lines are the highest density short trips, and the pink lines are slightly less density short trips. Like I mentioned, connecting to transit is key. So really wanting to implement those, those spine networks. A lot of them are already implemented. We have great trails in the city that are connecting to our, at least our downtown area, and we're working on implementing more of those in the Overlake area and Marymore as well. We want, we really see e-bikes and e-scooters being instrumental in meeting that mode share. We have a hilly city, as you know, and that really is an impediment to a lot of people. But with e-bikes, it starts to flatten out the city and make, make those trips more viable for a broader range of people. So that is a big, big strategy, and we can, we can talk about that. You know, e-bike lending programs and e-bike rebate programs to really promote e-bike ownership in the city are among the strategies that are included in that, that section. I mentioned this already, really focusing on implementing that spine network and using, where we can, using rapid implementation strategies. Not possible everywhere, but where it is possible, where we can kind of easily reallocate space or, in the case of a neighborhood street, install some traffic calming and signage to really make that a, a comfortable place for, for biking. We want to focus on that. So the, the strategy, as you'll see, it really tries to identify what those kind of shorter, nearer-term projects can be, just based on, you know, available right-of-way and, and other factors. And then also identifies those, those projects that are probably going to take a longer term to implement, just given their, their cost and complexity. There's a strategy around balancing modes. This recognizes that, you know, there, there is going to be a need to, in some cases, reallocate some roadway space to bicyclists, and that might impact other modes, particularly the auto mode. So whether it's removing parking or removing a travel lane or doing some other strategies to make it possible to install a high-comfort bikeway. And then the final strategy is really focused on bike parking. People need convenient and secure places to park their bikes, especially if they're e-bikes and cost several thousand dollars. They are going to want a place that they can put it and not worry about it. So that is a really key part of the strategy, of the Bike Network strategy. Next slide. Okay. I think I'll pause there, and then we can circle back to the Freight Chapter, because I'm sure you have lots of questions on the Bike Strategy.
That's a good, good idea. Are there questions on the Bike Chapter? Comments? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I appreciate the chance to revisit this tonight. First, I just want to say thank you so much to the team for your work on this. I sent this chapter to some bike commuting enthusiasts and just got like tremendous feedback and appreciation for seeing it all on paper and to see it all become part of a plan, particularly the spine. Just really great community feedback already on that. I also think, Michael, that that introduced a conversation that I saw you picked up online around Redmond Way in particular. And I really appreciate your work in that conversation and helping me also understand what the constraints are there and why it's not considered part of the spine for this, for this plan. So if that's something that council, I can forward that if folks want to, or maybe we already received it. Couple of questions here. My main bucket of questions around, around this chapter is our, about our ability to measure our goals. So a couple of things come to mind for me with, with biking and our ability for that mode share to achieve the levels that we're looking for. Some modes of transportation are more seasonal than others. I think the number of people I saw riding on our trails on Saturday versus Sunday of this last weekend is really indicative of that. So how are we going to know if we're on track? And so I have questions like, what season will we measure our progress in, and will we do that consistently? And how does the plan account for that? That's one of my buckets of questions around. How are we going to know what to measure?
Yeah, great question. You're right, biking can be seasonal. Although, if you look at research from Europe and countries that have similar climates to us, where they have really invested in bicycling and it's become part of the culture, seasonal differences don't make a huge impact. But it's going to take us a while to get to that level of biking culture, for sure. So how do we measure it? We, we'd collect, well, we're looking, we do currently collect bicycle and pedestrian volumes once a year at select locations. We are currently looking into either supplementing those counts or replacing those counts with big data. I mentioned that earlier. There's a variety of vendors that use mobile phone data, and various verification studies have shown that that is a pretty close approximation to actual counts. So we're looking at that currently as a way to actually measure the number of people bicycling and walking. We typically collect those counts in the fall and the spring. Big data is continuous, so we can, that's one advantage of it. We can get that data on a continuous basis. So there, there are a variety of ways that data that we'll be looking at to do that. Another, another option that we're looking at are just adding more permanent counters out there. These are devices that are, there's some on the King County Trail System that actually count people. And those can be quite useful if they, if we had them located in very strategic locations, and then we can take short-duration counts or use big data to essentially extrapolate those counts. We can get kind of a network-wide count. So there's a variety of ways that we can measure. And I think volumes is the, you know, really the gold standard.
I appreciate that, Michael. And I'm also hearing you say, we understand what good data hygiene is, and we intend to continue practicing that, even if it might look a little different, you know, as the, as the methodologies evolve. Thank you so much. My second question, thank you for including the data around the Rocky Mountain Institute and the incentive program for the e-bikes. My only question on that was, as it relates to the incentive for e-bike program, strategy to reduce emissions, I was unclear if we were talking tailpipe emissions, or that included the grid in which these electric vehicles, micro mobility vehicles are also being charged. Do we, do we know, or could we get the answer to that?
I remember you, you submitted that question a while ago. I can't remember what we, my recollection is, I actually engaged Jenny Leibich on this question because she was familiar with the Rocky Mountain Institute and some of their methodologies. My understanding of, of their methodology was tailpipe emissions is what they were really targeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Hey, how you guys doing?
Good.
It's good work. So this, I was thinking about measuring as you were talking with Councilmember Stewart. And sometimes, you know, volume is, is a measurement, or predicted volume, where you have lack of volume, is actually an interesting measurement. And the reason I mention that is, and I'm not trying to isolate this to where I live, but I do live up on Education Hill, and you talked about topography. And I think one of the barriers is the fact that it's pretty hard to go anything less than 30 miles an hour when you're coming down 166th Avenue because it's so steep. And so you're going to likely have these unique circumstances in every part of your spine. And I guess the question is, how do you, how do you predict and then measure and then implement mitigation to those unique circumstances? Like, when I think of another unique circumstance, it's over there by the five-way intersection, what's that called? Everybody knows it except me, 202 going up to Samaish. The barrier there is, holy crap, can I get across this intersection and still be alive? I mean, it's just chaotic and traffic coming from everywhere. So that's another potentially mitigating part of your spine. So have you thought about that, how each part of this is going to have those unique corrections to make it more safe and comfortable?
I think what I hear you saying is, we don't have uniform conditions across the city.
No, you said that, but I'm repeating it.
Yeah, so I mean, that really comes down to being focused on careful and thoughtful design at specific locations. If it's an intersection, like you, you're describing, I'm familiar with that. I bike through that myself. It is, I would say that it does not really meet the, the standard for like cohesive, intuitive design. So in some cases, it's taking another look at what's out there. So in some cases, it's taking another look at what's out there, what's been built, and asking if we can do it better. And really applying the best design practices moving forward. So yeah, every situation is going to be unique, and it's going to have different land uses adjacent to it, and different profile of users potentially. And we, you know, when it comes down to actual implementation, want to take all those things into consideration.
So the other thing that I was attempting to say is how to, how to measure, and how to, I mean, your vision, you didn't quite say this, but what I heard was, "All roads lead everywhere." And so if that's true, then, and it's, and the spine is going to be, you know, the heart of this, then there has to be a focus on, as I said, if there's lack of volume, or some other circumstance, as opposed to just following volume. And so when you measure and make corrections in the future, what I, I guess what I'm asking is that you keep your eye on expectations, and if those expectations aren't met, it could be that nobody in Education Hill actually wants to ride a bike, but it also could be that, that little narrow bike lane at 30 miles an hour doesn't feel right.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsey?
Thank you. This chapter is really exciting to me, so I'm very happy to be reading through this and seeing, you know, actuation signals that are near the bike lines and easy to access, lean bars, the conversation of e-bike incentives, yes, please, like, love all of this. The only thing I wanted to point out was, I think there might be potentially any clarification, or it's a typo. On page 20, there's a bicycle boulevards on 152nd Avenue in the Grass Lawn neighborhood, and that's not Grass Lawn? So I was hoping that maybe it's supposed to be swapped out with a Grass Lawn road, or maybe that's just supposed to be in Overlake. Page 20, the first paragraph of Action Item 4, the last sentence. I know we were looking at Grass Lawn and having Old Redmond Road be a protected bike lane, so I don't know if that's supposed to be that, or if it's 152nd in the Overlake So doesn't have to be answered now, just something to take a peek at. But in general, very excited, love how we're integrating all the new technologies and looking at other case studies, and like you had mentioned about changing that bike culture. We have a lot of people that ride year-round, and as long as you've got the right gear, people are good. And to the conversation around the bike counters, I know it's a conversation we've had a lot on the East Trail Rack Committee, so any ways that we can implement those counters along our pathways, I'm fully on board with as well. I also love riding down 520, going across the bridge and watching the number tick up as I go back and forth, so. Love seeing those and love having that data on hand so that we know that this is actually working.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nuava Kamena?
Thank you. I just think this is really great work, and I don't have any questions. Actually, I've got a request, but just wanted to let you know, like, this is really great work. I'm very excited about this. On page 33, is it possible to get a clearer graphic for that? I thought that it was my glasses when I was looking at it, and I kept looking for the sweet spot on my progressives, and it never would quite come in.
I will note, I had that as a note as well, because I think it's actually one of my favorite maps in here, but it's a little bit hard to read.
Yeah, yes, we will look into ways we can maybe make it a little bigger, and maybe bump up the line weights a bit.
Wonderful, thank you. Council Vice President Forsey?
Sorry, I did have one question, I forgot. Could you tell us briefly how the armadillos are working, how people are responding to those? Do we have any information?
I don't, I'm not aware of any information that we've gotten on that. I'm sure they're working, though.
I will follow up, actually, so, no, on the last comment, the one before, actually, I do love that map on page 33. I'm wondering, I also love the emphasis in this chapter on the use now of using the level of traffic stress as a way to kind of think about how we, how we plan. And I think the map on page 33 relates to that in terms of what kinds of bike lanes we see throughout the city, and it's something that we've asked for, so I'm glad to see that there. I wonder if we could have, not ask you for one more map, but whether there is a map that exists that is based on level of traffic stress. I didn't see that in there, but, because I was trying to equate, like, looking at that and saying, okay, a shared use pathway is like this level. So when I look at this, you know, the green parts are going to be the easiest, the pink parts are going to be, so I think having a map where we could actually see that and see, maybe it's on a, you know, green to red scale of what's going to be the easiest to hardest places to be able to get through when we complete the spine, maybe a little bit to some of the previous points could be helpful, or you may already have a map like that, and I missed it.
Yeah, just to clarify, like, existing level of traffic stress on our existing network?
I think planned, in terms of the planned spines and routes. It would be interesting, I think, just to be able to know, what are we aiming for? And at the end state, you know, just to be able to get a sense of, you know, high level, where are going to be the easiest places to get through, where are going to be some places that just necessarily, we're not going to be able to make them the easiest level, but they're going to be improved. Or even to be able to see those maps over time would be interesting, like, in 10 years, what will we see? In 20 years, what will we see? You know, based on the timelines would be interesting for us to be able to track over time.
Yeah.
Might be a lot for you to make as a map, but.
I'm thinking of this great graphic that I've seen in other plans that kind of show cross-sections of each facility type on kind of a spectrum from, say, red to green, green being, you know, low stress, red being high stress, and it kind of, I guess, is this another way of articulating, communicating sort of how different bikeway types provide different levels of traffic stress? This map on page 33 that shows the planned facilities, really the idea behind the planned network is that it's all low level of traffic stress, one or two. So we're not really showing, and where we're showing conventional bike lanes, the intention there is to lower the speed limit on those roads so that they are level of traffic stress two. So I guess, thinking through showing the planned network and the different types of level of traffic stress, we would be showing one and two. That makes sense.
Well, I guess if we're going to project out future state, then maybe we don't need it. Maybe it's a before and after of kind of, what's our current level of traffic stress? Where are we going to get to? How are we going to lower that?
We do, we do.
It wasn't clear to me, where we saw a bike lane, I assume that's where we're going to see just like a regular, you know, line bike lane, but to know that that's, that all of it, there's going to be a plan to lower that traffic stress, I think is helpful.
That's a great point. We do have a map showing existing level of traffic stress. It's not in this chapter, we didn't include it, but that could be a nice comparison. This is where we are now, this is what we're headed for.
Other comments, questions?
I had one other question, just briefly, and then we can move on. Just in terms of the benchmarks that you talked about, and that were in here, around the 15% of urban trips, urban center trips, and then 5% citywide, can you clarify where we kind of got those benchmarks from, and kind of how they relate to other cities of similar size?
Yeah. So part of bike planning is based on empirical evidence, and part of it's based on intuition. I mean, I'm just going to be honest. So if you think about our greenhouse gas reduction targets, currently 71% from transportation is our target, it's 71% reduction, and I, my understanding is that mine actually be revised upward with the update. So how do we get there? If you maybe just take 10 trips, and if you're targeting 15% of those 10 trips being by bicycle, that's basically, you know, one of seven, one of those trips is going to be by bicycle. More of those trips in our urban centers are going to be by walking. There'll be some trips by electric vehicle, and then the majority of those trips, not the majority, but the highest percent of those trips, would want to be taken by transit. So it seems like a reasonable target to assume that one in, I guess it's one in six trips is by bicycle in an urban center. We look at, when we look at cities in the US and around the world that have implemented connected low-stress networks, we see bicycling mode shares, you know, between 15 and 30%. So our vision for our urban centers is that they are, you know, dense areas with lots of destinations. It's easy for people to either walk or take a short bike trip. So it's a reasonable target, I would say, based on where we are today. It is somewhat aspirational as well, but we are putting the infrastructure in place to make it happen. Then, I think the goal is by 2035, so that's 10 years from now.
Thank you. All right, not seeing other hands raised, so let's move on to the next section, and then if any other bike questions come up, we can also grab them at the end. Thank you so much.
So the freight and goods delivery chapter is really focused, it's got two main components to it, and that is the freight or truck route network in the city. This is largely, this was defined in the 2013 Transportation Master Plan, and largely is a continuation of that network from the 2013 with a few adjustments. This network is defined by the traffic data that we collect on an annual basis. We also collect truck volumes, and then we give that to WashDOT, and that feeds into the freight and goods transportation system, FGTS. So they maintain that for the state, and then they provide back to us what the truck routes are. And so we, the chapter presents a map of these truck routes. I will say, there was two exceptions to the network that WashDOT provided us that we are not including in our network, and that is 1 Northeast 116th and West Lake Samamish Parkway south of Bell Red. That's because those are very residential neighborhoods. We have plenty of alternative freight routes, and there's really no reason for those routes to be used by freight. So that is one thing that's new in this chapter, that was not in the 2013 TMP, is calling for establishing a policy where we don't want truck traffic, and how we affect that. So that could mean providing information out to route our freight haulers. It could also be signing roadways to say that they're not for freight. The other main piece of the freight chapter is that last mile. So if you think about all the deliveries that businesses receive, if you think about online shopping, and how the city as it grows, and online shopping grows, it's projected to continue to grow, how do we manage all those trips on our network? And how do we create the space for efficient and safe deliveries to our businesses? So there's a lot of focus on that in this chapter. And then, and then kind of looking forward to drone, drone delivery, which is something that seems like science fiction, but it's actually quite close, and we need to be prepared for that, as the FAA is revising its rules around drone operations. They are likely to remove the rule that requires sightline operation of drones. There are some exceptions to that, like police departments, but right now, you're required to maintain visual sight. When that rule is removed, and my understanding is it will be removed, there will be a proliferation of drone delivery. So we need to get out ahead of that. This plan does not do that, it just calls that out as something we need to prepare for, and we need to just look into, what are the things that the city can control as far as that goes? We can't, we don't control the airspace, but we can control how they operate on the ground. So that is also a focus of this, of this chapter. Let's see if I missed anything here. Those are the main things. I think just related to the freight delivery and that last mile delivery, kind of ties into the curb space chapter as well, making sure that we reserve curb space for those deliveries, so we don't have deliveries kind of happening everywhere. Looking at technologies, City of Seattle is currently piloting this, where freight deliveries can reserve curb space ahead of time, so they have that. Looking at other strategies, like off-hour freight delivery, so delivering at night to just reduce loads on our streets during the day. So looking at a range of strategies. Any questions, comments?
Are you done with the presentation piece?
Yeah.
Great. Other questions or comments from the council? Council Vice President Forsey?
Thanks. On the matrix, I had the one question about curb space, and it kind of sort of ties in, so I'm going to just make a plug for it again. The question that I had asked was dedicated rideshare pickup and drop off, and the answer is talking more about what I'm reading as these kind of freight and loading zones. So I just want to make sure that the question that I had was very clearly about, you know, around light rail stations and Uber and Lyft areas that are like targeted within the app that people then go to that particular space, so that we're not having rideshare pickup, drop off all throughout that area. So I just want to make sure my question was really clear, so that when we actually get to that portion, we're all talking about the same thing.
Got it, yeah. Understood, yeah. That will be a focus of the curb space plan that's being developed by Public Works to really identify those pickup, drop off locations.
Appreciate that, because we've heard, I've heard that in particular from our gig workers in that space.
Okay, great.
Councilmember Fields?
Michael, in your vast experience of transportation planning, and on a scale of 1 to 10, how much is Redmond a challenge, based on how we built our city to create this curb space and delivery that's actually going to not be disruptive, not hold up traffic? We have very narrow streets, we have very few opportunities to create curb space. Have you had a chance to look at the challenge ahead and come up with an estimate of whether it's going to be a lot of money to retrofit our streetscape, or is this going to be something fairly simple? As you said, it's growing, online delivery is growing, our city is growing, there's a lot more people out there, there's a lot, hopefully we'll have more businesses at some point, milk deliveries, et cetera, et cetera. How big of a challenge is this?
I mean, no doubt, it's a challenge. I think another thing I didn't mention in the freight chapter is, you know, as the city grows and as the demand for these last mile deliveries... the city grows and as, as the demand for these last mile deliveries grow, I mean, we have to look at other strategies and one of them in, in the chapter is focused on centralized pickup points. And I think that is, you know, a key strategy that you see in, in urban centers where every individual isn't getting an individual delivery all the time, you know, guaranteed in two hours. Instead, Amazon is going to a centralized place, lockers or, or an actual business that accepts those and then the receiver goes and picks them up. So that consolidates those deliveries and helps manage the volume and just the circulation of, of those trucks nonstop. So I think that is a strategy that we definitely need to, to double down on in our, in our urban centers for sure.
And that makes sense. It seems like a cultural shift. People don't really want to go to the post office to get their mail. I mean, that's my comparison, but I like it, so.
Yeah.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I don't have any additional questions on the freight chapter. I really appreciate the strategies that are included and the assessment for West Lake Samamish I completely agree with. And really, Michael, I was just gonna basically say the same thing that you just said, which is I actually really appreciate that the strategies identified in this freight chapter help keep our urban centers going while also protecting them as great places to live as well. And I think that sometimes our urban centers carry a bit more burden when it comes to noise and traffic and things like that than some of our more traditional neighborhoods. These neighborhoods are going to need to be great places to live too and having great organization and awesome strategy that works together is going to be a piece of that. So thank you for your work on this.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Asking for a little bit of grace and patience because it's a little bit of external thinking. So when I was reading through this, I didn't think about it until while we're having the discussion. Living in downtown and noise, as Councilmember Stewart had just brought up, we want to create a great place to live as well as to do business and this is all part of it. One of the things that, that we notice in living downtown is not only is it louder here because we've got support networks here and like just the amount of, of people moving here, like moving around, but we also see in the construction that the windows are thinner, the walls aren't very well insulated, there's a lot of noise that's traveling both vertically and throughout external walls to where sometimes you would think that perhaps a window is actually open when in fact it is closed. So my question is, is how can we, as, as a city, as planning, is there some kind of lever that we can have to where maybe the, because we can't necessarily control the, how much noise, you know, freight is going to be bringing in if it's early morning or later nights that we're having deliveries done? But is there some kind of lever that we can put in, in, in the building? And I, I appreciate that this is, you know, we're talking transportation, but I also understand the breadth of the department.
So we actually do have one of those levers already in place. So roadways that are already operating in certain decibel levels or roadways of certain characteristics actually do require development adjacent to those roadways to demonstrate that they have a soundproofing that brings the level of noise within the dwelling unit down to a certain decibel that has to be tested before the buildings can be occupied. So that is one strategy.
Okay. When did that go in place? So that like buildings past this, because I, I'm understanding that there are going to be dwellings that have been built for quite some time that are not going to be part of that.
I actually do not know the, when that went into place. I can certainly get you that date. The other provision that is in there is one that is imposed on our own CIP projects that if CIP projects have certain outcomes that we anticipate, it is a mechanism for us to consider, for instance, noise walls and other mitigation standards if we believe the facility will create a noise above a certain level.
Okay. Thank you. And, and also thank you for your patience and grace while I externally process that.
Thank you. Other questions?
I'll just make one note. I, I appreciate the call out about the autonomous and drone delivery accommodation section. I think the, the only thing that struck me in reading through that section was that it seems like it's about kind of, it's about accommodating those new technologies. I think when we get to that place, there are going to be a whole series of kind of policy considerations. I like in the language in 3.4, 0.2B about investigating regulatory frameworks and, because I think that is going to be part of the conversation as well as the emphasis in the, in a around kind of safe and efficient last mile operations because I think we are going to need to look at that both in terms of autonomous vehicle deliveries and, and also thinking about drones because, as, as, as other jurisdictions are looking at that and, and what it is that, that we want to accommodate as we are able to regulatory, in a regulatory way approach that.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I think the intent here is to call it out as something that is on the horizon and we need to.
Imagine where we're going to be in 10 years from now and we'll actually have a technology chapter later on where, you know, we're even having considerations where maybe half of those things will have happened by that point and half haven't. And so I don't think just by having it in the chapter is not preempting any policy changes, but trying to be forward-thinking, knowing that we update these plans at a slower pace than how quickly the technology is developing.
Great, yeah. And I appreciate that, that it's, it's kind of planning that this is going to be coming, but not necessarily locking us into any particular vision without kind of getting to that policy or potential regulatory ability depending on where our jurisdiction is. So, thank you.
And Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. That actually just led my thinking. So this, the new map we're looking at for the truck routes, how does that compare to the old map that we had?
Yeah, it's similar in terms of just the, the roadways that are included on that. We made some modifications, like I said earlier. We removed 116th, which actually I don't think was on the old map, but WashDOT was showing it as part of the regional freight network. So we removed that and West Lake Samamish. We also dug a little deeper into, so the previous TMP had truck routes and then it had truck access streets. And those truck access streets were primarily in southeast Redmond and the intent with those streets, my understanding was southeast Redmond, we need these streets to support the industrial distribution uses in southeast Redmond. So all those streets are still on the network. We've just done, I think, a better job at defining what we call primary truck routes and secondary truck routes and kind of what the function of those are. That was not as well-defined in the previous TMP. And so the primary ones, WashDOT has this, this system that goes from T1 to T13. T1 are like the heavy truck routes, like 520. And T13, I don't know exactly what that is. It's like, but we are really focused on the T1 through T4. So T1 and T2 are primary truck routes. T3 and T4 are the secondary truck routes.
And then can you just elaborate on how much time we spent with the overlay of the, the bike portion?
Yeah. In about a month, we'll be here with the street plan, the street system plan and that is where we are integrating all the modal networks. So there are.
Ahead of you.
What's that?
I'm a little ahead of the conversation.
A little ahead. But rest assured, yeah, we're looking at all the different networks and where there are potential, what we call modal conflicts and trying to resolve those.
Thank you so much. Seeing no other questions, then we will, I think, be looking forward to hearing about final next steps from Director Holland and then we'll close out this item to hand the next steps back to Michael.
Yeah. So do we have the? Yeah, so in May, we are going to be presenting to you the transit network and the street system plan chapter. Really excited to present those to you and get your feedback. And then in July, we'll be coming with the pedestrian network and the transportation demand management chapters. And then by that July timeframe, we will have finished. We are conducting a number of focus groups with community-based organizations. Actually, we had our first one today and it was very successful. And we have three more of those. So we'll be able to report on what we've heard from, from those groups at that July meeting.
Fantastic. Thank you. And want to say thanks so much for also sending these chapters a little in advance for us to read. If you end up with a similar situation with the next chapters, definitely feel free to pass them along early. And thank you all so much for this very diligent work. Really great to see this plan coming together and I know everyone's been excited about this bike conversation. So here we are. We, we're, we're at this moment and look forward to the path forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is automated speed safety cameras that amended city ordinance and camera vendor service agreement. And I believe we have our police chief coming up to introduce this item. I will note that, and we also have our, our deputy chief, Coats, as well. And I will note that this was, I think, a request of mine at, at our committee of the whole that we bring this to have a longer discussion at study session because it's such a robust plan that you brought for us. So I want to say thanks to the chief for coming and deputy chief for coming to, to have this conversation and we'll turn it over to Chief Lowe. Go ahead.
Thank you. As soon as we get our technical issue situated, we have a couple of slides that address some of the questions that were brought up at the committee, specifically camera placement and then specifics around the survey that was done in regards to the community sentiment around the cameras. So for Redmond High School, as indicated on the map and I know it was included in your packets, it shows the location of the cameras. As has been talked about before, it's for a, you know, very short and specific area designated as a school zone. It's not, you know, the entirety of a street. Just kind of hitting on the high point. Enforcement will occur when the beacons are actually illuminated. There's a 30-day requirement from the time the cameras go in and it's posted. We had talked previously about the requirement being 30 days for notification of warnings that we are more than happy to do 45 days to give additional time for the community to get used to, you know, the cameras, get the warnings, change the behavior. Also additional conversation around how we would reach out and provide information to the community. As indicated, it would be both on the, the department's social media platforms as well as the city's platforms, the quarterly newsletters. We will work with Lake Washington School District to socialize it amongst the school population. Given the timeframe for where we are right now, this would occur into the next school year. So we would have, you know, over at April, four to five months to socialize, communicate, like I said, on both the school district, the police department and the city's behalf. As far as the community sentiment, I probably should put the glasses back on. When we look at it, not, not working in the least. Let's go back one. Sorry about that. So one of the questions that was asked was about the concerns about traffic safety around parks and schools because this conversation has been both schools and parks. Right now, we're focusing primarily on the schools, but the ultimate goal and desire would be for both school and park zone enforcement. Overall, that there, the community shares the concerns for it. I guess where the conversation centers around is in part, some of the feelings in regards to whether or not it will change behavior and then what the, the reasoning or rationale is. There's some conversation or thought around this being a, a revenue issue for the city and this is not the purpose of this particular program. The purpose of the program is to change behavior, to slow down drivers in these specific areas because as I've had conversations with several of you on council as well as complaints that we get, you know, into the police department speeding around schools and specifically around parks, we just had a lot of conversation around bicyclists. That is a, a common complaint and occurrence. So that is what the purpose of this is, is to ensure the safety of all of our residents, both in cars, on bicycles, et cetera, and specifically to keep our kids safe in those school zones and school areas. As far as the support, you know, for it, I'm going to argue it's 50/50 because those that are neutral, I, I think they slide to the, this side as opposed to specifically not supportive, you know, of this particular measure. And same with, you know, with the parks. I think we, we've seen that, you know, in, in the results, but I think in part as we socialize it, as we communicate, you know, about the purpose of it and the community sees the change in behavior which will occur, you know, if the program or when the program is implemented. I think if we repolled after a period of time, I would expect those numbers to change and be more support, more supportive. And then they asked specifically if they were not supportive of the reasons why. And as I had mentioned before, there, there is concern that it may just be a revenue source for the city and not actually improve safety, but for other communities that have implemented these types of programs, they do see decrease in speeds which results in increased safety. And with that, I'll open up the questions.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Chief, one of my questions that I had asked in study session was around households that are cost burdened or that meet low income and if, what criteria that was going to be based off of. And I saw in the report that we were measuring households per locations that were at 200% of the federal poverty line, which kind of addressed, because, you know, free and reduced is a federal, but our cost of living in Redmond is nowhere near the lines of federal. So I saw in here, there was a footnote, which I love seeing this, that, la, 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 "Seek automatic relief," I'm on page four, "seek automatic relief in the form of a 50% reduction in the fine if they meet established criteria." Footnote three. But what I was looking for in footnote three, and I did love the note in there, "Mechanism is not available to individuals who have had similar citation within the previous three weeks." But what I was looking for in there was what is the criteria?
So the, the fine structure is controlled by district court. We don't have, I'll say, say or latitude in that. So once a citation is issued, it goes to the court and the court retains, I'll say, the, the latitude leeway as far as how and what they will do. Given, you know, the, I'll say the relationship that we have with court, community court, there are options available. And so if a person had that hardship and they made that known, it would ultimately be up to the judge that's overseeing that matter, how they adjudicated it or what relief or, yeah, what relief mechanisms they would allow that person to participate in.
Great. Thank you. When we roll this out, is it possible, because I'm sure that there's going to be a communications on our website about the program and all of that. One of the things that we find in, in families and households that are lower income is a time constraint and, and there's a lot of just not knowing even what questions to ask and even what's available or what, what the resources are. So even if it's having a link over to the court saying like, and this is the criteria instead of, you know, if you meet the criteria, but not knowing what that is, I think would be really helpful. Thank you.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. Perfectly leading into my question. So given that we don't know what those criteria are and that someone would have to then additionally, someone who's already burdened would then have to additionally take time off of work to go to a community court or go to. to go to a community court or go to some sort of hearing, I just can't be in favor of the park zones at this time. That doesn't really change from what I've been saying this whole time, but that clearly illustrates why I personally am very much in favor of this going up in the school zones where there's flashing lights. People know that they're going to get that ticket if they're not being safe. But I kind of just want to see how this rolls out before we implement into those park zones. Not saying no permanently, but saying, no, I can't be on board with the park zones right now. So if this is to come forward at our next meeting, I would make an amendment to strike the park zones for the time being until we have more data.
Councilmembers, I'll ask if there are other questions. Also, if anyone wants to weigh in on the proposal that Council Vice President Forsyth just made around including park zones versus not on the proposed language changes to the Councilmember Fields?
Say one thing.
Yeah, Chief Lowe?
May I suggest that we amend the ordinance to include it? Just because we modify the ordinance does not mean we have to activate the park zones or start that part of the program so we don't then have to come back and reamend the ordinance. And then if, at the appropriate point in time and after additional discussion, I will come back and seek, well, backed it up a little bit, to leave the parks in the ordinance as written and submitted. And then based upon the outcome of, I'll say, tonight's discussion vote, if it's decided that we would not do the parks, then to come back at another point in time specific to the parks, but not have to come back at that time and also amend the ordinance a second time. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. So it sounds like the chief is requesting that we do amend the ordinance at this moment so that way we have the flexibility in the future to make more of the administrative change instead of having to do the code change at that time. And we'll just take councilmembers' thoughts on that. I know Councilmember Fields, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
You want me to give thoughts on that?
Whatever you want to give thoughts on. Go ahead.
I have an open question. So can you tell me how the six miles an hour over the posted speed was arrived at? And I know you talked about this before, but how does it compare to other jurisdictions? Because I'm hearing everybody has a story out there. And everybody I've talked to knows somebody who got eight of these tickets, and they're a teacher, and they were going 22 miles an hour, 23. So are we different in that we're allowing six or?
So six is the recommended standard from the National Highway Traffic and Safety Administration. Obviously, the higher the speed, the more significant the injury. Six is a, I'll say, in my opinion, a reasonable mark over the posted speed limit. We can get into conversations where if you get double the posted speed limit, that can technically be reckless driving, and that's a completely different conversation. But again, in a school zone, six miles is what is recommended. I don't know if other jurisdictions are doing it at lesser speeds, but it could be because of the behavior and traffic patterns there that they feel it necessary. Here, we believe six is representative. And then from the reports that were submitted and from the speed surveys that were done, people are traveling significantly over six, over 10, over 15, some even 20-plus over that posted speed limit.
So what in the future would it take? Would it take a revision of the ordinance? I should know this. But like, who has the authority to say, "I want to go to 22"? How does that get done if somebody wanted to?
So ultimately, that would rest, I would say, with the police chief to say 20 miles over, but then the law specifies that if we were to make that modification, then we basically roll it back to zero and start with the 30-day notice of the change. It's just like a change in traffic pattern. So we wouldn't just be able to arbitrarily raise or lower just because we wanted to.
But it would be the police chief?
Well, it would still have to come to council, but...
Oh, it is council. It's a council decision.
Correct.
Okay, so, okay. Good enough. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll jump in, I think, to your point. I wanted to clarify where exactly, because we have this document that is this plan, and then we also have the ordinance. Is it RCW 4663-22016 where all of this is included or 220? Maybe it's not 16, but 220? Or are there, where specifically we would have the details on how much over the speed limit triggers this? Or is it in this attached plan that we're approving?
Primarily, it's the attached plan. The ordinance, we've had on the books since 2006 regarding the automated speed enforcement cameras. We were required as a city to incorporate the updated statute from last July, but it doesn't go so far as to say what the threshold speed limit shall be.
Okay.
And then if I could offer...
The RCW would not have our specifics in there anyway. Right. Okay, so essentially, we would need to update this specific plan in order... So this plan is really what is setting the direction for how we implement our own cameras, but then based on what it says in this plan is when a ticket would be issued. And then after the ticket is issued, then it's with the courts based on the RCW of how to handle it?
Correct. So if the ticket is challenged, if there's a hardship, then yes, the court would adjudicate that matter. If the person says, "Yeah, you got me," they send in their fine or fee, then the matter will be resolved. The courts only get involved if they want to challenge the ticket.
Other questions? I have one more question, but I want to ask all of them at once. Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you, Council President. Not a question, taking a moment of privilege of platform, just to call out that in our middle schools, we've got highest speeds recorded at 43 miles per hour. We've got highest speeds by Redmond Middle at 62 miles per hour, and Rose Hill Middle School at 54 miles per hour. Now, of course, these are outliers. However, Rose Hill Middle School, for those who are listening, and again, just using platform of privilege right now to call out, that for six miles an hour over the limit on three days of January 22nd, 23rd, and 24th in both AM and PM, the percentage of six miles per hour at Rose Hill Middle was 58%, 59.9%, around that up to 60, and 62.4. So I'm glad to see that we're putting this in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I will jump in on that. Just that in the plan, I think we could be clearer of exactly, because we note what the National Highway Traffic Safety Association recommends, but to be clear, at this threshold, this is kind of where we'll do it. And then one question that I had for you, which I had asked you this offline as well, is, so I think we note that the beacons have to be flashing for you to be ticketed, but we do know, like, for example, I will say, in the area near Redmond Middle School at night, I hear a lot from residents in that area that people speed through that area. They do drag racing or kind of really fast speeding through. And when we do see people going 30 miles per hour over the speed limit in an area or 20 miles an hour, I am wondering if there is some sort of use even outside of the flashing beacon time if something is an egregious violation above a certain amount, whether that would be possible for us to look at. I don't know if we want to do that right now, but it might be a way to be able to address, because I know we've gotten actually emails to the council about this, people speeding at really high speeds through some of these neighborhoods at any time of the day, and just curious about what the possibilities are there, also based on the relevant state laws.
Yes, it would be possible, but I would want to, I'll say, bifurcate the conversation. So for school zone enforcement, the law is specific to the criteria and requirement there, and it has to be when children are present or when school activities are occurring. So in this particular circumstance, it could extend beyond the morning drop-off and pickup in the sense of the middle school and high school have after-school activities. So it could be enforced during that time as well, provided the beacons are activated. Now, the technology is such that I'm sure on the back end, it could be worked out to where if it triggered, let's call it 30 miles over posted speed limit, it would be able to capture that data point. We'll have to do a little bit more research to find it out because at that speed level, that would actually be considered reckless driving. So there will be some legal aspects of it because this is a camera and not an actual commissioned police officer that is observing that, but that may be doable. So we can definitely come back to you after a bit of research, both legally and technologically, to discuss what is possible outside of school zone enforcement.
Okay, thank you. And what I heard from you on the flashing beacons is that we might have the opportunity, if we are using them during kind of the regular current level of flashing beacon time, if we realize we actually wanted to extend that a little bit further out to cover before and after-school activities, potentially, we could look at how long that flashing goes for. But I think gathering the data on those outside of hours ones and coming back, sounds good to me.
So we wouldn't have to come back. So the way the law is written and the way the program is proposed, it's available during school hours. So school hours would include after-school activities, but for school zone specifically, I'll call it the triggering point, is the flashing beacon. So the beacons will be flashing, so it will indicate to drivers, to the community, that speed zone enforcement is occurring at this point in time. Consistent with it is the speed camera, but the display. So they will see what their actual speed is during that point in time. Part of the request in the package includes the contract and the vendor for this particular program. And in part, the reason selected, and that was one of the previous questions that came up, is because part of the validation process for the ticket is that this is the only company that will actually verify whether or not school was in session or programming was occurring before the citation is issued. So we don't waste time of issuing tickets and having to take them back and going through appeals processes. So if you have that anomaly of an ice day or snow day, it's an automated process. So it will be programmed that the beacons will start flashing at said time, which would be the morning. But if for some reason, school was not in session, they, as part of their, if you want to call it quality control or customer service, they actually verify to make sure school was in session. So again, we don't end up wasting a lot of time for us, for the courts, et cetera. And then one other question, and I believe it was Councilmember Fields that had asked in one of our other conversations. This particular vendor is a flat fee. There is no incentive or motivation for them or no profit for them for additional citations or tickets. It's a straight, flat, basic equipment program fee, so no incentive. They don't have any say in the speed aspect of it. So again, it can be lowered or changed to incentivize any type of profit for a company or anything like that.
Thank you. And can you remind the listening public where the revenue from any tickets that end up getting collected would go towards?
So the RCW requires that any revenue collected from the tickets actually be utilized for traffic mitigation programs or infrastructure, that type of thing. It's not, the revenue from the tickets do not go, I shouldn't say, don't go to the general fund. They can be used for other things. They can be used to supplement the budget. It has to be used for things directly related to traffic mitigation, traffic calming, et cetera. So I would say it's more of a public works aspect or a public works benefit. It's not a police department benefit. It's not a city's generalized benefit. It's specifically around traffic mitigation and calming.
So what I'm hearing is if people end up getting one of these tickets, then they pay into a fund that ultimately helps us to invest in ways to make our community even safer on the roads?
Yes.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Council Vice President Forsyth?
I just want to circle back to the bifurcating the parks versus schools in the ordinance. You almost had me convinced, but just looking at the data that we have here, I'm not seeing it. Like, the percentage overs is like 3%, 1.7%. There goes up to maybe 5% on a couple of these park areas, whereas the school zones, it's very, very clear, like whoever's going 62 miles an hour and 54 miles an hour in a school zone needs to be caught. So I'm very much supportive of the school zones. I'm just not there on the park zones, especially considering we are looking at all of our speeds throughout the entire city, and that study is currently being done, if I'm not misunderstanding something. So I'm really just, I kind of want to hit the brakes on the park area, knowing that there's other work going on and knowing what the impacts are to communities that are already disproportionately impacted.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, and I appreciate the council member reflecting, again, the concern with the parks zone. But the park zone has a, for me, the park zone has such a higher barrier. So we're seeing lower percentages over because the over is 11 over, not 6 over. So I continue to be comfortable with including them in the ordinance. The other thing that we need to adopt next is the service agreement, and we don't actually have a service agreement for parks yet, correct? It's just the school zones?
Correct. With the parks and everything. Service agreement with the vendor?
Yes, we need to approve the service agreement that's in front of us. That's just for the school zones, right? We've not yet moved on to the parks.
Right.
Okay, and we're continuing to collect more data. So I'm comfortable leaving parks in the ordinance because the threshold that is being measured here is actually higher, even though it's a lower percentage of instances at that higher threshold.
Thank you. And we are joined online tonight by Mayor Bernie. I also see Councilmember Salahudin has his hand up. We'll go to Mayor Bernie, who I imagine may be commenting on some of this.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, I appreciate the comments about parks. I will share that in my talking to neighbors around two parks in particular, Idlewood Park and Grass Lawn Park, there are some pretty significant concerns from neighbors. There's also a lot of pedestrian traffic during certain times of the year that can be excessively dangerous. And so I think it is, it would be worth it for us to do some more studying on that since it's not something that we're going to put in place just right now. But I would say that there is, around those parks, some very significant need by the community members to do some things to ensure that people are moving a little more slowly and keep the pedestrians in those areas safer. I would also, we've also attempted to make the biking lanes safer, and that has been a real challenge with some of the speeds that we see in that area. And so I hope that the council will consider keeping that in the ordinance so they'll keep moving forward and thinking about how to make those areas around the parks safer for the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Salahudin?
Yeah, thank you so much. And I want to thank the mayor for bringing that up. I was actually going to raise the fact that we are striving to be a more walkable city, and that is geared around a lot of our parks as well. And creating the infrastructure so that it is safe to walk around, bike around, and move around comes with, in my belief, making sure that we're protecting our residents from these high speeds. So I would, I completely understand where Council Vice President Forsyth is coming from, and I think that a further study of parks is necessary, but I think leaving parks in, to me, is also important. But I just want to thank Chief Lowe and the team for all the work in getting us the data. I think that was really helpful to look at. And just want to call out what Councilmember Nueva Camina rightfully flagged in terms of the data specifically around our schools and understanding that this should be a top priority for us. So thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I just want to weigh in on the parks. And... Yeah, I just want to weigh in on the parks, and I tend to agree with Councilmember Salahudin. I think, you know, because of my other activity of umpiring baseball, I oftentimes am around those parks. And I do see people speeding during games and during a lot of high-traffic, pedestrian traffic, and people moving in and out of the parks. So I think I'm good with it. The only other comment I want to make is, I hope you're right that the 50-some-odd percent who don't want this end up liking it in the long run, and they, and that they don't throw rocks at my car when they see me. So I hope you're right.
Thank you. I will just add one note on, on the parks that I do think, the table on page 10 is demonstrative in terms of, you know, the number of crashes that we've seen near some of our parks and injuries that have happened near there, especially near Anderson Park. There seems like there's a very high amount. And if we could bring down that, that number, that also would align with our work on Vision Zero. I think what's good about this rollout is that we do start with the schools. We see how it goes. We connect there. But I think I, for my part, probably am okay leaving in the ordinance the parks so that it leaves the door a little more open to that conversation going forward. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I'm clear that I'm not opposed to pedestrian safety.[698.32][698.32](laugh) I just think we're getting out ahead of our skis. So given that I am in the minority on wanting to remove the parks, what is the timeline we're looking at for potentially including cameras in those zones? Because that, that part I'm not necessarily clear on.
I mean, I can have the survey updated, you know, within the next couple of weeks, and we can bring it back in rotation. I would say, in all fairness, perhaps we wait, you know, 30 or 45 days, redo it, and then revisit this in the fall, because that will give us time to, if approved, move forward with the school zone, get that timeline and know when that is going to go live and implement. And then, as part of that conversation, to come back and essentially report out as to where we are, when we expect to go live date, and then continue the conversation with the parks based on the updated data, and then shoot for a, you know, January 1, or, you know, early 2026 implementation of the parks.
Okay, so that leads me to two more questions. Would that require a council vote to then implement the park zones? And lost the other one, I'll come back to it.
As more of a procedural question, I would imagine yes, because it'll be a modification to a service agreement, and it would be the activation of a program. So I would say yes.
Okay. I can get on board with the, yes, as long as we are coming back to vote for it. And what's the collaboration that's happening with the WashDOT study on speeds and all the other studies that we're doing that will feed into this information? Because maybe these, maybe these zones end up becoming 35 miles an hour when they're already 30. So looking at, at that broader picture of our street safety.
So we will have, continue our conversations with our partners over in transportation management, just to make sure that, you know, we are aligned with what they have, you know, coming onboard. You know, I'll say this traffic survey is outside, outside of what they're doing, but to make sure that we don't have any unintentional conflict with, you know, how we're moving forward and what they're doing. And if for some reason, you know, speed zones change, then we would have to then subsequently make the appropriate modifications to our program consistent with those new speed zones or whatever they are. If they are, you know, faster or slower, we would have to modify accordingly. And that, too, would require, you know, a conversation with the council.
I appreciate that, and I think you just hit on my concern is that this is happening outside of those conversations. So I appreciate that.
Outside and parallel to, but yeah, so, but yeah, because, because our focus is completely different. They're looking at it from a transportation management or perspective. You know, we're approaching it from a public safety perspective. And sometimes those things don't necessarily synchronize as far as how they occur, but both are important for different reasons.
Right. Thanks.
Thank you. Great. And I guess my last note would be just going back to the survey results. I think as much as we can communicate out, if you can come share with us about any of the plans or be able to, you know, email us some of that. I think one of the, the big stats that we've talked about during these conversations that has resonated with me is how, at different speeds, what are the likelihoods of surviving getting hit by a car? And how really, at that, you know, 20 miles per hour speed, how that really reduces, you know, the likelihood of serious injury or death? And, you know, I just want to be able to look our community in the eye and know that we've done what we can to be able to protect our kids, make sure kids can want to walk to school or bike to school and feel safe. And I think just to be able to share how we see this technology as supporting those goals would be great. If we can have infographics or other types of things go out as we implement this so that everyone understands the culture of safety we're trying to create. I'm, I'm on board with that. So it's sounding like the council is moving towards having a lot of the questions answered here. Council, or is there objection to taking this package and moving it towards upcoming business meeting for a vote? I'm seeing thumbs up there. All right. And what's the, do you have a proposed date for when we would see this on a business meeting?
Yes.
I didn't see it in the memo, so I wanted to double-check.
I thought it was in there. Do you know off the top of your head?
I don't think it's in there because we were waiting for the study session.
Great.
So I'll have to look at the calendar.
Next available consent agenda, please.
All right. Oh, we'll, all right. So we'll work to get it scheduled onto consent, assuming no objection here. I'm not seeing that, so we'll, we'll be putting that to consent. I think my only request would be out of this, if we can make sure, since, as we know, as I noted in the information packet, in, in the program analysis and recommendations, if that, if we can have a very clear either website page or governing document that once we start to implement this, people know what are the rules, how is it going to be enforced? Kind of the, the section that's relevant within this packet. You don't have to dig through our whole study and everything. It's easy for the public to be able to access. I think I'm okay using this as the vehicle to make the recommendation, but I would want to make sure it's super easy for the public to know what the rules are governing this, since I'm sure we'll get a lot of questions.
Good. So what I'm hearing is that we will do like we did with our other programs. We will have it accessible from the city's website or the police department page on the city website, a specific link to automated school zone speed enforcement. From that, they will click on it, and it will have all the relevant documents, links, FAQs, et cetera. So it'll be essentially, well, it'll be multiple clicks, but they will be able to get to information that they need from that section on our website. And then, as far as the report out or report back to council, we will include a slide or a portion of a slide in our quarterly updates to council that will speak to the program and data and statistics around it.
Sounds good. Councilmember Fields?
I don't know if it's been talked about, but are we coordinating with the schools to try to get this information out?
Yes. We have already been in contact with the schools, and then if approved or once approved, then we will work in conjunction with their communications folks, because at this point, the timeline will be for the upcoming school year. So we should be able to begin to socialize it towards the tail end of this school year, but then in the onboarding for the next school year, they will communicate it, we will communicate it. And so it will be well communicated.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will note that in our joint meeting with the Lake Washington School Board, the Lake Washington School District Superintendent, when we mentioned that we were looking at implementing this, noted how important it's been in other cities in the district that have been able to do that in terms of improving safety and that, and just noting that there's been, I think, some of that support from the school, the parents and school community for that. So that was really helpful to hear. All right. Well, it sounds like we're good to move this to consent, and we'll follow up to let the council know when we'll see that on the next business meeting agenda. Thank you so much for your hard work on this and for your efforts to keep our community and especially our kiddos safe.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that brings us to the last item on our agenda, which is council talk time. I have a couple of things that I wanted to share with the council, and then also we'll open it up just in case there's other items that the council wants to talk about. So one is just a reminder of upcoming event. It just got put on our calendars, but it's been out there for a little bit, is that tomorrow is the State of the City address. And Mayor Bernie, I don't know if she wants to speak to this, but it'll be at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow here at City Hall. It's in collaboration, put on with One Redmond as well. And I know the mayor would love to recognize any council members who are going to attend. So if you didn't yet do the official RSVP on the invite, maybe just email the mayor directly, so that way she knows if you're going to be coming and can recognize you in her remarks. Mayor Bernie, any notes on the upcoming State of the City address?
No, just really, would really love to have everybody there. I know it's a pretty full house, but we also have some other, some businesses that will be in the lobby for people to kind of cruise around, see some of the wonderful things that are happening in Redmond. So I'm, I'm pretty excited for it, and my team and the One Redmond team have done an amazing job. So I think it'll just be a really great time, and we can, we get to show off all the wonderful things Redmond's been doing for the last year. So would love to see you all there.
Wonderful. The second is, you probably saw an email today from our legislative coordinator, just noting questions about whether we'd have quorum for next week, so I thought I'd do just a quick straw poll. Is anyone not planning to attend either in-person or virtually next week? I'm not seeing any. So I think we should definitely have quorum. I will be virtual next week, and I may miss committee, so I did want to just note that for the council. But otherwise, it looks like we'll be perfectly good, and we can share that with, with Deidre. The other thing that I just wanted to note is that we have been working with our legislative coordinator on a couple of different things in terms of materials for the council, to be able to have within our shared drive. One is just a matrix of all the past and upcoming policy proposals, and then like a better tracking document, which we talked about at our council retreat. So I wanted to note that that's in the shared drive along with the updated form there. Also, there's an events calendar that I think hopefully many of you have seen. You can kind of see it right when you get to our main shared drive. Maybe at the next council talk time, I'll do a little screen share, run through in case anyone has questions. But one of the things that we added in there was a column where if you're, we're going to, we added in both kind of more official events as well as if you see any events that we get invited to by community-based groups, you can just forward those to Deidre. She'll add them to the list, so we have kind of a big running list. And if anyone wants to add their name in the column to the right, you can note if you're going to be attending that, just as part of the goals that we set of, you know, wanting to coordinate or know whether council members would be attending different types of community events, and also just having a central place to track. So if I see something come across my email, I might share it for the whole group to know about that, one of our, you know, a great festivals going on in our city. That may not be an official city event, but is a great one for us to be able to attend in addition to the more specific city events. And we're also going to try, where there are city events with council leadership, and we meet every other week with our legislative coordinator to check in on that list, make sure if there are any notes for preparation for council members for any of those events, that you have some informations that you can adequately prepare for showing up to those, because we want to make sure that we respect your time. So just wanted to kind of throw that out there. It's a work in progress. I actually have to add my name to a bunch of those, that column. But, but I did want to note that, that we're making those improvements for communications. Other thing, you'll see that we put a hold on your calendars for May 29th for council conversations, although I will note, as I said in committee today, that another conversation got scheduled for, for May 28th. So I am going to talk with the Parks Department a little bit more about how we think about those two conversations. Originally, council leadership and discussion about this thought that it might be good to do Grass Lawn Park just because it's kind of a bigger space, a little bit more easy access for, for different reasons, and we thought a lot of people might be wanting to come out to that one. And that was one of our potential locations. We still have Estera Park as well as Southeast Redmond, maybe near the Light Rail Station as the other two for the rest of the year. One of the things that was noted about Estera Park that I just wanted to raise with the council, in case anyone has any comments on this, is that I think one of the, the kind of challenges around Estera Park is there isn't a ton of parking around that area. And, and I think it would have to be more of a, for the people in the neighboring community and people who are coming and bringing, going on different modes of transportation. And I think that's, that's just going to be the nature of having it in Estera Park or having it in that neighborhood, and that's part of what we've been discussing with the neighborhood of Overlake. But I just wanted to note that, since that was brought to us by the staff, just noting that in some other, I guess, events that were had there, I guess at least 20 cars got towed because they parked in places you can't park, right around that park. So I just wanted to note that, but I don't think it means that we shouldn't use Estera Park as a location. I guess I'll just pause here because I just wanted to take the temperature of the council on that as we look forward and do schedule a gathering at that location. Any comments? Our Overlake council member?
Sure. And as someone who's not traditionally had a park in my neighborhood, Grass Lawn is the park that my family has celebrated so many birthdays and family milestones in. And that is a park that doesn't have a lot of parking either. And in my hope in going to Grass Lawn as a council in May is that we're able to connect with the hundreds of families who already recreate there on a spring evening. And so I'm hoping that we are actually moving around the city in order to meet folks where they're at a little bit more. So in my mind, this is actually in support of our goals, is continuing to move around the city and be in closer proximity and more accessible to more folks around our city. So I'm not concerned. I'm actually, I actually think that's in support of what I'm interested in seeing the council work toward, but happy to hear other thoughts.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And that was kind of my thinking as well on, on a lot of these locations. And our hope would be that as we move around the city, it's really the people who live nearby that can come out, in addition to people from all over the city that hopefully can make it over there via various modes of transportation. So, great, okay. Seeing positive feelings on that in terms of Grass Lawn first, and then hopefully Estera Park next, and then maybe, and then also Southeast Redmond on the list as well. So we'll be getting those ones scheduled out throughout the rest of the year and on your calendars as soon as possible, so everyone can block that out and look for any surveys on timing for those. And then one more note, just in terms of different events that are, that are happening or kind of event discussions here, is that we also were already getting planning for Redmond Derby Days, and wanted to check with the council. As we're planning, we were discussing using the City Hall porch to have the council booth again, rather than being down kind of with some of the, the booths that go in more of the parking lot area. Council leadership was discussing and thinking that, that was a pretty good space. We definitely heard from the council and are emphasizing from the beginning that we plan to invite our commissioners to join and be with us at the booth. But I did want to check in with the council. Is everyone good with us using the kind of City Hall porch as our, our location again for our Derby Days booth? All right. See nods and thumbs up. So that's great. We will proceed on some planning, and you'll be hearing more about that as we go forward. And then did want to bring up one more item, which has been in discussion since our council retreat, which was looking at taking action as a council or being able to send a message to our congressional representatives on, on proposals to remove tax exemptions for municipal bonds. And I will pass that over actually to Councilmember Stewart, who's been doing a little bit of research on this. But we'll just note that there had been some discussion on doing something on this. Now it seems like the timeline might be a little collapsed, so I did want to bring it up as something at council talk time to discuss how we want to proceed on it, since it was identified by the council as a priority already. Councilmember Stewart, do you want to fill in a little bit on this?
Sure, thanks. So this is something that my committee is tracking at the National League of Cities, and so I flagged for council leadership that a template resolution and letter and all these things became available. It does seem like if the council would like to weigh in sooner rather than later is, is better. I personally just had a capacity issue and missed a personal deadline to draft something up. There is also the, the draft letter in the advocacy toolkit for NLC. I could forward that along if the council would like, so that each council member individually could, could add their thoughts and, and contribute. could add their thoughts and contribute if they would like. Or we could go the version of drafting a letter. It's just a matter of capacity, quite frankly, to be able to weigh in.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. And I would, not my intention to call out on the timing. It was more a question, actually, to ask if you could just give us the context on that letter. It sounded like the goal, in terms of being impactful, would be to send something by the end of April. So, and I'm seeing Mayor Bernie as her hand up. I was going to make a proposal in terms of the process for looking at a letter like that, but maybe she has an idea. Mayor Bernie?
Yeah, thank you. This has been a matter of discussion in a lot of meetings that I've been in with, for example, last week at the Mayor's Water Council meeting, because, you know, as everyone knows, bonds, tax exemption, bonds help fund so much of cities' infrastructure. So I think there is a great opportunity. I would say that it might be as simple as perhaps on the meeting next week, that I unfortunately will not be attending, but perhaps in new business, just a mere motion to support, or to send a letter to our delegation, or to sign on to any NLC or Congress of Mayor's letters, or however you want to say it. And then we can have, we can have the team, our federal lobbyists, help us find the direct way to kind of put our name on something like that. So maybe we don't have to make it as complex as writing a resolution. Just a suggestion.
That's great, yeah. I was actually thinking a similar thing, since we have that federal lobbyist, whether we might be able to pass along the draft letter template and have them be able to take a look at it and format it for us. If council members were comfortable, we could make a motion to support based on the template letter next week, and authorize the mayor and council leadership to work with the lobbyists to approve and send a letter to that effect to our congressional delegation, just to be able to kind of make sure we get something out on this. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thanks. I had a chance to look at the letter and the resolution. I like the resolution better. I think it's stronger. So I would be in support of however we move forward with this, but making sure that it's the strongest possible version, and highlighting exactly why this is such a critical moment right now.
I would be happy to work with you to be able to adapt to that, and maybe we could screen share it during the meeting next week. Want to be super transparent here that we would be bringing it. We don't typically just bring things as motions that we make during business meetings, but we could look at getting that, at bringing that onto the agenda if we wanted to take a vote during our business meeting. Councilmember Fields.
So, with all the budget ideas and changes, and taxation, and things that are up in the air from a federal level, including tariffs, why are we signaling out this? Because it affects our budget?
Councilwoman Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. And I, sorry if I missed the cue earlier, Council President Kritzer. I think that a lot of us learned that the tax exemption on municipal bonds was being considered as a pay-for back in February, when we were in Olympia, and we were hearing from the folks from NLC and whatnot. At this moment, Congress is working on a tax package where the tax exemption for municipal bonds is very much in play and could be removed. The data from NLC shows that the removing of the tax exemption of municipal bonds essentially raises the price about 20% for any given project. Our next project, we're lucky we don't have to fully finance on a huge major bond, but there is a chunk, and I would like that chunk to not be 20% more. So I think that was a little bit of the sentiment we discussed at our council retreat. And it felt like we were, we had solid direction on that, but good chance to check in.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Anything I would just add to that, that this is controlling the controllables. This is an area in which we have direct impact. And while the tariffs are going to have direct impacts on us and our citizens, this is one area that, like, we can speak to in a professional way, that this is a way that they are proposing to not tax the wealthiest folks, and they're passing that tax on to the citizens and on to the community members in the cities. So, I think it's just a bad policy, and I think that this is our, kind of within our wheelhouse, to call out how terrible this would be.
Thank you. And given that we don't actually have the letter in front of us, I don't want to go too much deeper on this, but I did want to bring it up as a potential process, since it had been discussed as a priority at our council retreat. And, you know, if we want to, we could also send it around, and council members could choose to sign on individually if we don't want to take a vote at the next week's meeting. But it might just be easy if we wanted to just make a motion, and then, I think we did this before, where we made a motion to approve sending something on behalf of the city, and then gave council members the opportunity to add their signature as desired. So we could do something like that, if that works for council members. I'll just ask, does anyone object to taking that approach? Great, okay. Well, we'll come back and send some more information to the council, and again, recognizing the reason this is a little bit different than our usual process with the hopper, is just because this was discussed at our council retreat, and kind of, we did kind of the step you would normally do via the hopper at that retreat on this topic, and because of the timeline. So, with that, I'll open it up. Is there other items that people wanted to raise for council talk time? All right. Council Vice President Forsyth?
I just wanted to circle back to the community conversation. Since there was an email that went out about the 28th being a Parks conversation, and we do have our calendar hold for the 29th for council, I think this is a moment we could potentially pivot that conversation to be about the teen center, and I kind of wanted to get a temperature check from council members as to whether or not we want it to be focused on communicating with our teens, or the more general open conversation about city business in general.
Thank you. Actually, I appreciate that, because I think we had talked about that, about whether we want to have our community conversation be general, and then have a different dedicated conversation, maybe not back-to-back two days in a row. But we're, we could have a special conversation, listening session with our teens, and then have community conversation, or just have community conversations and be clear, the likely big topic of this community conversation is going to be, come share your thoughts about the teen center and teen services. Councilmembers, do you have any thoughts on that? Councilmember Stewart?
I have only questions such as if, for the meeting regarding teen programming and teen services in our city, and now we'll include, of course, a conversation on facilities. If the point is to hear from youth voice, then it should be located in the most relevant place to hear that youth voice, and I don't know that Grass Lawn is necessarily going to be that, nor am I completely, my stepson graduated high school, and ever since then, I am completely unaware of the school's calendar, so one of my questions would be checking in on like the school calendar and where that lands, to make sure if we're trying to hear from youth voices, that we're hearing from youth voice, that we're offering up an opportunity that folks are going to actually be able to take advantage of and be able to plan for. So, only questions there.
All right, thank you. And I see Councilmember Salahu Dean has a comment. Do you want to share, Councilwoman Salahu Dean, or you want me to read to your comment from the chat?
Oh, I can, yeah, I can just reiterate, oh, sorry. Just that I think having a separate conversation with our teens is something that we should look at, separate from our regular council conversation, and have it in a similar format as what we've done with other events.
Okay, great. Councilmember Nuava Kamina?
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Salahu Dean on that, to keep it separate. And, I'm so sorry, I just lost it, on considerations for around that date. That weekend is also prom for, I believe, a couple of our high schools. I know specifically for Redmond, I believe that Lake Washington is also the same night. So, leading up into prom, that might detour some, because there'll be dress shopping and corsage, picking outing, and such.
Very important parent context. Thank you so much. That's great. So, yeah, we'll follow up. I'm hearing the feedback. We want to do two, we want to do a listening session with teens, and we want to also have that council conversation at Grass Lawn Park. May include also discussion about that, but could include other topics. So we will follow up to do some of the organizing on that. All right. Councilmember Stewart?
One more question on the intended council conversation up at Grass Lawn Park. Are we thinking more of the casual table-based conversation rather than the town hall style? Is that the intent of that location?
Yeah, I think we were going for a more casual picnic, roundtable vibe. Any other items? Go to the order? All right. Well, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned.